I'm going to call and order the Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like you to please bow your heads in silent supplication to our Lord for protection for our county, its citizens, our state, and especially for those that are struggling in Florida and throughout the Carolinas in the aftermath of Hurricane Ian, as well as the people in the Ukraine. If you'll please stand for the pleasurable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, County Manager Maul, would you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We have the removal under a presentation of special recognition and awards of item 5.1. That'll be rescheduled at a later date. The addition of a closed session, personnel closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A6, and then the addition under special recognition by Scott Stevenson.
Any further additions or amendments?
No.
Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion to approve the agenda is made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we will move on to a special presentation. You know, normally, at this presentation time, we are recognizing the contributions of county employees or members of the general public who have performed outstanding service to the county and its citizens. And this is a little different. We're actually getting something from a citizen. So I would ask Mr. Scott Stevenson to please stand at the podium, and I'll ask Vice Chairman Neder to introduce him and a little bit about what he's presenting for us.
So I'm glad to welcome Scott Stevenson this evening. Several weeks ago, he and I had a conversation regarding some history in a photo, and he wanted to have an opportunity to present that to our county manager, as a matter of fact. And here comes some information, too, along with this. Thank you for that. But just as we're sitting here, it's always important to know you've captured a moment or uncovered a moment in history of Iredell County. It reminds us of what we do now in packs of future, how important it is, our manager's role, the commissioner's role, and you never know who you're related to on these things, too. So Scott Stevenson, excited to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Neder. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Mallory, County Manager Maul. Tonight's a special evening. It's long overdue, possibly about 73 years overdue. Tonight, my father, Don Stevenson, myself, and the descendants, there's some out there in the audience, we're going to present to the county, to commissioners, this photograph of the commissioners and the county manager from 1943 to 1949. Some of those gentlemen served before, some served after, but that period of time is when my grandfather, when he was chosen to be the county manager. So this is the missing photo. We've been talking, I've been promising Beth forever, Ms. Maul forever, and we've looked for it for about the last two years. And interestingly, there were other people around here that had that same photo. Mary Gilbert, who is a daughter of John Long, who was the chairman back then, she had a copy of it. We just didn't know. So my father took this photo around 1948, and to best my knowledge, it's never hung in these halls of this historic courthouse. Something I'll read on the back. So through the course of history of the United States, some of it's unfortunate. There's wars, there was slavery, poverty, depression, and other dark moments. To more fortunate and brighter times of rebuilding, restoration, innovation, and thankfully, longer periods of peace. This country, for the better part, has always persevered to come out on the greater side of victory, to include here in Iredell, partly because of great men like those guys. I'm sorry. Made their creativeness, their drive, and love for their fellow man, woman, child, county, state, and country, be instilled in the current and future generations of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners and its county managers. So at this time, without further ado, Chairman Mallory, if you would, and County Manager Maul and the rest of the commissioners, please come forward, and then the descendants, if we can move forward and meet them, and if Melissa Neder, if you could, please, ma'am, position us where we need to be, and we'll get a photo.
Where everybody else in the...
This is the one that's been in the...
That is awesome. And that one's still in my office right there.
Yeah.
It is.
Come on up here.
That is so awesome.
We're working that way.
Also want to give a thanks to Amy Anderson, too, who was a key part of this production.
And I want to give a thanks to Melissa Neder, to Amy, to Susan Robert Robinson.
Robertson.
Because they kept it nice and quiet and secret all this long, and I think it was pretty much secret until maybe Beth took her seat. I don't know.
Well, we just, just crowd on around us here. Just come on in. Scott?
I was going to get Dad up there to kind of do the presenting parts, and he took the picture.
Took the picture.
I don't know if he's still got that camera.
You've got to look forward to falling apart when you get older.
Nice to meet you. Great to meet you, and we can just hope, we can all fall apart as well as you have. You know, this picture is a good visual reminder, and these people are a good visual reminder, that you don't know where you're going unless you know where you've been. And, you know, nothing is, we all build on the efforts of others that precede us, and we are fortunate to be standing on the shoulders of giants.
Well, that's, that's very well said, and I appreciate that very much. And as I'm sure my fatherhood, if he were standing here in my place, this photograph was made for a trade edition of the Statesville Record Newspaper. And the gentleman that was the publisher of that newspaper just happened to be a Republican, and I'm sure he would feel comfortable here tonight. But my father downstairs in the room where the county manager now sits, at his desk, or her desk, as the case might be, I guess it's a gentleman is about, anyway, in his typewriter, he still had the county budget for the coming year in his typewriter. And the next day, he was, had called a press conference about the budget, when he would present the budget to the county and to the newspaper. Well, that evening, about 10:30, he passed away with a heart attack. I was 16 years old at the time. If I live to be, in December of this year, I'll be 90. So it just goes to show you how time flies. But the newspaper editor, realizing that my father had passed away, and my father being a Democrat, was no polished example to that newspaper publisher. But he did say in a little column in the newspaper that was published in that day called Down in Iredell, he said that my father was good to his word, for the only thing that would keep him from keeping his word was death itself. And my father, I'm sure, had he heard that, and he maybe did, he would have been very proud of his accomplishment as the county manager of Iredell County. It's a great pleasure to present this picture, which was made for the trade edition when I was about 16 years old.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Come and smile. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, and we appreciate all the names. Now, I've seen the picture before, but I had no clue exactly who was involved, so.
There's one name on there, it's Ms. Phil. Mr. Sheen.
But they're going to fix it.
Should be you instead of another.
Yes, that's all right.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mary.
Thank you.
Good job, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Well done.
I gotta get this easel back to Steve Hill. It's costing me $50 a minute.
Those rental fees, right.
I got you. Hey, keep down. Yeah.
Instead of just wanting to reply.
Yeah.
You want to go?
Thank you again.
Thank you, Scott. Great job.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey.
We'll now move on to item six, the appointments before the board. There are none this evening. And that brings us to item seven, public hearings. First, item 7.1 is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2024 Public Transportation Program Funding Request. And to tee that up, we have our ICATS Director, Mr. Bradley Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bradley.
Tonight, I come before you with a public hearing for the public transportation grants. It is a combination of six grants totaling right at $3 million. In that grant request is for placing 16 vehicles. It has an estimated cost of $1.6 million. There's $900,000 of 5307 operating funds, which it will cover our fixed route services in Statesville, Mooresville, the Community Connection, and the Iredell Express. That'll cover 50% of the cost of that. The other part will come from contributions from municipalities. It'll also cover services for individuals that don't follow or fall into the 5310 Elderly Disabled Grant for Work Transportation. Right now, we're doing about 550 trips a day, and about a third of those are work transportation trips. You know, we're trying to ensure that we, people have a way to get to work, and we are, we're working very hard on doing that. We have the 5303 Planning Funds, which is, covers our public outreach and some travel training. It's for individuals who potentially would know or have the physical ability to use our system, but they don't have, they have the fear of traveling on public transportation. And so we could, you know, help those people with their first time riding and stuff like that to get them comfortable with using the system so they can continue to live on their own. We also have a 5310 Rural Operating Grant for $100,000, and that is for individuals that are 65 years and older or have a disability that limits them from having their own transportation. And that's only for individuals that live in the rural area. We did, we applied for the $100,000, but we have not saw what the census data actually does to our county with the urban rural split. So we think that we are going to have more than enough money for that, because right now, the amount of trips that are considered rural coming into Statesville are very limited, basically anything north of 40. And those, those trips are, are less than the ones that we have that are in town. So that's what we have the 5310 Rural Grant for. And then we have just a combined capital grant, and it's showing the $1.2 million on the, on your local share certification form there. And, and that's because we don't, we don't know how the census data is going to affect us, so we might get more urbanized money that might come in the form of 5339 or just state money. But it's until the census data is, is published and gives us our urban rural designation, we don't necessarily know which grant that $1.2 million could fall into. But the state is fully on board with that, and that's their recommendation.
Okay. Well, to reduce this to something that's a soundbite, if I can, our ICATS is basically funded about 75% by the federal government, everything having to do with administration, hiring folks to drive, buying the vehicles, and planning, and different percentages. And it takes somebody like Bradley with a PhD in understanding the transportation code promulgated by the federal government and all the rules that follow, and particularly in a county which is as diverse as we are, with rural and suburban and micro urban areas. He really does a great job in trying to figure out how to mine all the different potential opportunities to get funding. And then Taboot has to work a lot of that through the Charlotte Area Transportation System, and because they are a recipient of some of these monies directly from the federal government, for simplicity's sake, but that's just another hoop that we have to jump through and negotiate. So he and his staff are real experts at being able to put this whole thing together. It's just, you know, it's just not a bus with a driver that just shows up. This is a very complicated dance to try to get the right kind of funding to serve our people and get a return on investment of your federal tax dollar. So thank you, Bradley, and to your staff for the hard work that you do. And they're looking to build a new facility for ICATS that the federal government will cover 80% of the cost. So basically, we've been saving up for several years to cover a million dollars of a $5 million bill. So anytime we can get something that serves our people and pay 20 cents on the dollar, we think is a good return on our investment. So are there any questions or comments from other members of the commission for Bradley?
I just wanted to mention, for the record, mention the amount of the match that we do with the grant funding. I think it was 2.7, 2,715,567 grant funds, and then 642,086 for our max, correct? And didn't you mention at five, you mentioned that the reason some of this may look a little high is because it's over several years of vehicles and things because of the shortfall on getting those vehicles.
Yeah, correct. That's what, generally, we don't replace 16 vehicles in one year. You know, we have 30 vehicles in our fleet. We usually would, you know, it'd be nice if we could do four or five per year, but we have not been able to get any chassis from our '21, '22, or '23 orders.
Right.
And so all of those vehicles are being rolled into the '24.
In fact, you had vehicle orders canceled.
Canceled. That's why I wanted the public to know that was why that's like a...
Yeah, so, yeah, we had vehicles that were on order for over a year, already had the VIN numbers from Ford, and then they backed out and said that those VIN, those vehicles were no longer available. And so now we're starting over, but there's not a vendor currently that will take an order for our vehicles, because they cannot get the chassis.
They can't get the chassis because they're going to Amazon, who's paying a higher price.
They don't deal with the Gulf.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
None.
All right. Well, at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I note that no one has signed up to be heard on this. I would ask if anyone in attendance would like to be heard or speak about it. Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
I'd like to make that motion to consider the adoption of the 2024 Public Transportation Program Funding Request.
Okay. Motion to adopt the funding request. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, move on to, thank you very much, Bradley. Move on to our second public hearing, which is a request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on October 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in regard to a text amendment to the Land Development Code. Excuse me, I picked the wrong one. Here we go. This is a public hearing in regard to the uniform schedules of value standards and rules for market value and present use value schedules to be used for the 2023 countywide appraisal. And we have Fran Elliott, who is our tax assessor, here to tee that up. We had a lengthy presentation concerning this whole process, replete with slide deck, so that is on our website, if anyone would like to, to go through that to get a little bit more information about the process, so.
Good evening. To adhere to General Statutes, tonight has been scheduled for the public hearing of the 2023 Proposed Schedules, Standards, and Rules to Be Used in Appraising Real Property at Its True Value and at Its Present Use Value. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments concerning the proposed schedule values.
Okay. Are there any questions for Fran at this time, Commissioners? Okay. If not, I will open the public hearing, and we do have two individuals who've signed up. I'm wherever, Jill Schooly, and if you'd please come up and state your name and your address for the record, and then following Jill will be GW, and I'm sorry, Slazza.
Hi, my name is Jill Schooly. I live at 117 Canada Drive here in Statesville. I do work in the home construction business. I work with people every day, building homes, selling homes, so I've got a little bit of background on that part of it. I just want you to be aware of something that a lot of people don't realize. One year ago today, the mortgage interest rate was 3.2%. On a $400,000 house, your payment would have been $1,730. Today, that interest rate is 7.3%. That same $400,000, your payment is $2,755. So on the same amount of money, people's payments have gone up $1,030 on a $400,000 loan. And if you use the existing tax rate for last year, and just take for, for example, a $250,000 house last year, now on MLS and sales, it's going to go in the 400, 425 range. That's how much this overinflated year has done to housing. Your county tax last year on that $250,000 house would have been $1,800. I had a 400, and I'm being very low on saying that same house at $400,000 value, if this new, same rate, new appraisal, that house comes in at 400,000, you're now paying $2,880 to the county. I understand the city piggybacks on that. They'll raise theirs as well, so that exact same house is going to now raise your payment $158 a month. And I'm well aware of how this all, you know, works, that you have to do this every so many years. I do want more information on how it is actually calculated. I've seen it several different ways, and I don't really, I've been told, you know, it's a three-year average. I've been told, no, it's just this year. I've been, on the website, it says January 1st to 2023, so I would like more information on that. Looked for it today and couldn't find it. But I just really want you to be aware of how people can't afford to live anymore. I mean, the inflation is so out of control this year in housing, and we're seeing it start to come back down. Actually, if you look out on some of the Wall Street Journal yesterday, came out and said the US housing market is getting ready to see the second biggest home price decline since the... And I'm well aware of how this all, you know, works, that you have to do this every so many years. I do want more information on how it is actually calculated. I've seen it several different ways, and I don't really, I've been told, you know, it's a three-year average. I've been told, no, it's just this year. I've been, on the website, it says January 1st to 2023, so I would like more information on that. Looked for it today and couldn't find it. But I just really want you to be aware of how people can't afford to live anymore. I mean, the inflation is so out of control this year in housing, and we're seeing it start to come back down. Actually, if you look out on some of the Wall Street Journal yesterday, came out and said the US housing market is getting ready to see the second biggest home price decline since the Great Depression. That is backed up by Morgan Stanley, Goldman Sachs, Moody's, and it goes on and on. So it's really shifted from what they thought it was going to do, and they're seeing a decline next year of around 10%. If you could possibly delay the tax assessment for one year, it would actually help a lot of citizens of Iredale County, so I'd like you to consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Schoolly, and we'll have a few remarks to maybe perhaps address a couple of your questions. And Mr. Stevenson?
Stevens, sir.
Stevens, okay.
Hello, my name is Gerald Stevens. I live at 148 Meadowx Drive here in Iredale County, just north of I-40, in that rural area. I would like to say that she stole a lot of my thunder. I think all her facts are pretty much dead on, hitting the nail on the head. I'd just like to say that with that, we have a lot of veterans and people who are on fixed incomes, retirees, social security people, who this would be a great burden to them to have that kind of money added to their mortgage payments and their daily bills because they have to come up with that money, and it's not going to come out of the air. I would say that houses, I've seen a remarkable jump in price. I look in my neighborhood, there's a house in my neighborhood up for sale right now for $435,000. When that house was built back in 1990s and was sold, it was about a $175,000, $180,000 house. And in between there and now, it's gone up quite a bit. But for it to jump from around a $250,000 valuation to a $435 valuation in one year due to our economy is, I think, ridiculous, but that's just the way the numbers fall. But I do think that because of those numbers, it will create an undue burden on the taxpayers to use that as an assessment rate to drive our new assessment for property values. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. That exhausts our list. I would ask if there's anyone else that would like to be heard? And your name?
Good evening. My name is Tammy Boris, and I live at 120 Jana Drive in Statesville. And I moved here three years ago, right before COVID. And I'm also in the new home business for a living and have been for 30 years. And so I feel strongly that what we've seen in the past few years with COVID, so many people being able to work from home, they can live anywhere, a lot of people are relocating to this area, the greater Charlotte area, and having to move to Statesville because it's just land where homes are being built. We do have many more new homes coming to the area that will bring in additional revenue. And I don't think that using the increases of the past two years is a good gauge for the overall long haul of the housing market. And I do see a lot of people on fixed incomes relocating to the area, retirees, and one of the big draws is, you know, the affordability of our lifestyle here. But it's bringing in a lot of extra revenue, and I do think it should be considered because it is a hardship when people have bought here for a particular reason. And then with, the pandemic has really just escalated things that are cooling off now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boris. Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing and hearing none, I'll...
One more. I'm sorry.
What?
Back here on the right.
Okay, I'm going to reopen the public hearing.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, Richard, five minutes, that's the timeline.
I'll be real quick. Just have more of just questions than I have statements. I'm curious to know, I'm curious from a transparency standpoint, especially for the community. If you have numbers that you can show as far as where you see us, as far as the inflation, how much your cost of labor, your cost of materials, your cost of goods, things of that nature, that you have expense-wise within the county. If those cost increases match what you guys are going to see as a median increase as far as the overall revenue to the county, and if those numbers match up, or if where it needs to be adjusted, I'd also like to know if there's a possibility of kind of displaying within each department what the turnover rates have been because of the cost of labor and the lack of being able to get some. I just think that from, especially because this, you hear this all the time in the community, that there, a lot of people are very fearful about what they could be looking at from a tax perspective in 2023. But I think maybe they, you ease a little bit of that if they know what the money's going for and what it may cost them in the long run if you don't do it. That's just all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else here to be heard? Okay, well, then I'll close the public hearing. There are several issues that have been raised. Ms. Schoolly, is she still here? Yeah, there you go. You mentioned it's the tax base, the tax assessment times the tax rate, and that's the key thing for people to remember, that the revaluation, which is based on actual sales in neighborhoods that are calculated up until, you know, the end of the year, those are what drive the valuations. Now, that valuation, of course, is based on the best available data that, you know, our staff has. But there may be issues about your home that we're not aware of, that, you know, square footage that's included that's not there, or, you know, just whatever. You have an ability to, you know, appeal those values and go through the, a staff review, and then after a certain period of time, it goes to the Board of Review for this whole process. So there's multiple opportunities along the way. And if you have unusual circumstances in your home that would cause its value to decrease, now's the time to engage with the staff at the assessor's office to bring that to their attention so that they can make an adjustment if that's appropriate. So that's on just the valuation process. And the purpose is not to raise people's taxes, it's to equalize the tax burden based on the, on the wealth, relative wealth of the property owners. Now, the tax rate is something that is set by this board and will be set next year sometime when we adopt, when the new board adopts the budget in the May-June timeframe. And we have never built a budget just by saying, well, values went up X percent, let's increase the budget by that. That is not how Iredale County budgeting works. We have a bottoms-up budget that is built year to year, department by department, based on their strategic goals and objectives that have been, you know, briefed to commissioners and what they want to accomplish. And that is the number ultimately that drives the train, you know, being the most effective and effective and efficient delivery of services. And we have departments that every year turn back money. They don't spend money at the end of the fiscal year just to, you know, because it's there. If you've ever worked in the federal government, it's exactly the opposite. You know, when you get to the end of the fiscal year, it's Katy bar the door as far as buying copiers and paperclips and new chairs and desks and all these things, just to spend the money so that, because if you don't spend it that year, you probably aren't going to get any increase. You might lose that in your budget the following year. Well, I can tell you from experience that our staff, at the departmental level, has our same view towards our budget as you have towards your household budget. And if we don't have a need to spend money, we put it away, we put it in savings. That's turned back to the budget, and it rolls into the general fund for the next year. So I want to assure you that you have some very sharp-eyed departmental heads and staff at our county level and our finance department that review it very closely. So any increases, and, you know, we're not immune to inflation. If we have to build a building, it's, you know, the cost of building school per square foot went from three years ago, $250 a square foot, to $350 a square foot. Now, that's, you know, that's driven by a lot of requirements out there, but that just, you know, gives you an idea that to provide the services that you expect, we're not immune to inflationary pressures. We're not immune from having to compete in the workforce for good people to provide those services. So we are going to be competitive with our neighbors, and we don't want to lose people to anybody because when you lose people, it costs you much more to hire a replacement and train them than retaining folks. So we've gone through a salary adjustment study, we've done the best we can to be as competitive as we can with our competition, but our competition is other government, it is not the private sector. So it's a, it's a moving target. But at the end of the day, we have maintained the lowest tax rate of any county that touches us, and there's nine counties that touch Iredale County, that's more than any other county in the state. And that includes the rural counties like Alexander, which has a much higher tax rate than we do. And it's because we've been focused on economic development and attracting industry and commercial development in the right proportion to residential growth. We're going to have residential growth whether we like it or not. It's just going to come, that's the marketplace. But when residential growth comes, so does the need to build schools and to staff those schools and to provide more law enforcement and more social services. All those things go up. But if you have the right balance between residential growth and commercial and industrial, and it's roughly 70/30, then the growth that you have in commercial and industrial, they pay more taxes as industry than consume services, and it offsets that residential cost. So we've been very successful at attracting good-paying jobs to Iredale County for our industry and commercial enterprises. And we're at about 28% to 72%, so it's within that range, that it's a sweet spot. All those things go into ultimately us determining as a board, well, what's the tax rate going to be? Look, we don't want to be anything but the lowest tax rate of any of the counties that touch us and the lowest tax rate of any county in the Charlotte metro region. We wear that as a badge of honor. We've had that for how many years? A long time. And part of that also goes to tax collection. We have one of the highest tax collection rates in the state, you know, 99.6, 7%? It's, you know, give or take a tenth of a percent. But all those factors go into, I think, delivering the best bang for the buck for our citizens. And so we're going to very carefully evaluate all of those factors as we come up with a tax rate that we like to have stick because we have a four-year process driven by revaluation. And so generally speaking, you'll collect more taxes the first two years, but less the last two years. So just like the story in the Bible of the, you know, the fat calves and the skinny cows, the dream, you know, when the hay's chining, you put some hay back to cover the years that are bad. So we have a four-year cycle. So that's a long-winded, I'm sorry to my fellow commissioners, discussion about that, but I think people really here and that are tuning in need to understand that just because your tax value went up does not mean that your bill is going to go up, you know, that proportionally. We're going to adjust the tax rate to, you know, meet our budget needs for not just the current year, but going out for the next four years. And so, but the more new development that comes in, as was mentioned, that adds to the tax rolls, and that diminishes the need to raise taxes. You'll see some counties that raise taxes several times during a four-year period. And we have not done that. The only time we've raised taxes is to pay for a voter-approved bond to build schools. And that's it. So.
Touch on the programs as well that are available through the office, too, for if you have an income level and the veterans, so.
Yeah, there's elderly reduction, and you can speak to that, Fran, you know, I could pull it out, the numbers, but...
If you have a question, I know, yeah.
There are exemptions that folks get and break. Yeah, Fran, why don't you just share that very quickly?
Yes, we have the elderly exemption that helps individuals that are 65 of age and older. If their income of the household does not exceed $33,800, they can receive $25,000 off of their value or half. We also have the veterans. You must be 100% disabled during your service. Trying to pull my pamphlet out here so I don't forget something.
That excludes the first $45,000 of assessed value.
Yes.
And...
Yeah, and you have to be totally and permanently disabled with an income not exceeding $33,800. No, that was elderly, I apologize. Veterans is just $45,000 off the appraised value. We have a circuit breaker program, 65 years or older, permanently disabled with an, or permanently disabled with not exceeding $50,700. There are many more applications to that. There, we only have one applicant, so that one's very, not used very often.
Fran, I've got several questions, when you're ready.
Will you address the speakers? Explain, permit Schoolly, the, how the rates are calculated? Talk about that process, neighborhood by neighborhood, because she's got some misinformation at some point.
Yes, we have neighborhoods divided residentially into 620 neighborhoods throughout the county, and we are pulling sales, and we will be doing it till the end of the year, looking at what is happening, qualified sales. So we're not looking at sales that were like relatively or relatively changed hands or foreclosure, it has to be qualified sales. And we are determining per neighborhood what's going on in that market, changing, making mass changes to bring all the sales and the rest of the parcels with it up to 100% of market value. And I know that people speculate on what's going on in other states nationwide. It's not happening here. We're not seeing it. I pulled up four neighborhoods today, and I'm not seeing any tick in sales prices. And based on the MLS information, since August, days on market has increased two days. two days. The median days on market was 10 days and that is still very low.
Talk about, we mentioned, if you had a property that's worth $250,000, unless it's used around figure that's been thrown around 30%, what would that increase the amount?
I'm sorry, 30%.
If you had a property worth $250,000 and the revow increased that property value 30%, what would that person pay additional taxes on? What would that amount of additional money be? For example?
The tax rate, oh yeah, the tax rate determines, yes.
Well, that's what I wanted you to say is, is explain that because I think to James' point, the board next year will look at the revow, they'll look at the property tax rate and decide whether or not the property tax rate could be lowered...
Yes.
To offset if it is unfairly inflated or the market somehow's off to that point. But I think, I think that's what we've got to say publicly is whatever board is here next year will look at that, it's not this year.
Correct.
And, and there's been, I think, some, um, based on our current tax rate, what would that increase be? I know you, as far as, because I think there's been some inflated numbers out there that's intended to scare people as to the amount their taxes would go up on that property.
Every, every neighborhood is individual and it's...
Right.
But, yeah, every, everyone's individual. We're looking at everyone on its own.
Right. But I think that was, that's what I'm trying to get you to say is, is to James' point, people can reach out and get the facts about these situations and not listen to, so what I think is some misinformation intentional out here trying to scare people for political gain and political purposes. But, and talk about the process and how long it takes. Um, Richard talked about the tax perspective and the cost of not doing it now or postponing it. To James' point, the importance of the tax collection rate keeps the property tax rate low because that's bringing in revenue for our board and administration to use for services that we do. And, um, balanced growth, well, if we can keep the commercial and industrial outpacing residential, that's what concerns me if that flip-flops or changes because of our requirements to build schools with that residential growth and we're not allowed to have, you know, impact fees or developer fees to help offset those obligations by, by statute. So, explain, answer some of their questions maybe specifically and, and maybe they can respond if, if it's not answered to their liking, but I think it's a good time to put out some fires as, as for the misinformation that may be out there.
Okay, well, I think one of the most misinformation is just the nation, national, what's going on in the nation.
Right.
That is not what we're seeing in Aridale County. And being in the real estate market, I would think they would be aware, we've had, we've increased the unit price per square footage of houses. We're, now the base rate's $110 a square foot. We've increased, uh, the basement levels. We, we decreased some of the basements because it was offsetting, but we bought, we base a lot off the Marshall and Swift Cost Estiment. So, if there, what, what were some of the other questions you'd like to know? Or anybody, really?
One of my biggest concerns is we have had a 27.3% increase in home values in one year. We know we're set one above. We know we're set one above. You know, we're starting to see it go down yet? Has it been at the existing market yet? No, we took construction market. That's where it's going to hit us first. You know, people can't afford two-story houses. Where's it going to hit next? It's going to hit the test. Yes, they predicted and predicted and predicted and predicted that this is not going to go down. Now, every major, major, you know, Forbes and all of this are now predicting it to go down.
Yeah, nationwide.
I'm a southerner. It could go up 20 cents next. You're one of the southerners. So, we're sitting here guessing on a market that nobody could have guessed it would happen this year, but why are we, why are we trying to tax people? The highest year in the housing inflation that it's been in 50 years is going 27.3% in one year. That year to do, you know, we can, we can delay this one and see if this is going home. But that year that's had the highest rate of inflation in housing, I think is a disservice.
Well, I think some of that is speculating what's going to happen next year and we really don't know. It could go up next year.
And when I base my, you know, when I, you were listening, I said a house that was $250,000 last year, I'm taking this out of my neighborhood, okay? A house that was $250,000 last year is selling now for $420,000. It's possible above. Is that going to happen next year? You already started to see the people in our neighborhood, they're not going to have it.
Well, they may be more realistic, but we're not, one sale is not going to determine the neighborhood.
I'm aware of it in this business.
Yeah. So, we're working with the data we have and not speculating.
Yeah, I'm afraid we're getting into too much back and forth here. Thank y'all so much. I realize you were trying to answer some questions, but I'd like to just ask that we have it to where we've had a chance to address the board and I thank y'all very much. There is a whole lot for us to consider moving forward with this. It's a three-year process. Again, the final impact is really going to hit at our budget next year. That's really when it's going to hit. With that tax rate again, which the chairman has reflected clearly on the importance of that part. Have we ever seen anything like this? Absolutely not. And none of us can predict, but it is critical that we rely on the experts in the field that are doing the evaluation that has taken over, or going to take three years of information because if we stop, it's going to end up costing us more in the long run to get started again. So, it's, it's critical. I realize that, the importance and your concerns truly are heartfelt and I appreciate all this being brought in because it's, there's never too much information as long as it's accurate and conversation is critical moving forward and understanding and fact-driven because we don't take this lightly at all.
Understanding from the chairman, like he was saying that there is a possibility, if you see that coming down next year when you start to vote on this, the kind of tax rate itself could possibly...
Yes.
That's what we're going to discuss at that budget session in the spring.
The one thing I would like to bring in about talking about the housing portion was she talked about her evaluations for veterans at 100%. I don't know how many of y'all dealt with VA. It's pretty much impossible to get a veteran to 100%. That's on really debilitating, massive injuries or PTSD issues or things like that that really takes them out of the work environment. Let's consider the veteran, say it's 75 or 8%. So, if I only paid you 20 cents on the dollar, how long or how far do you think you would go? I'll be able to pay your bills and everything else. Do you have veterans that's operating at 20% this capacity because he's 8% disabled? So, how do we give him a break unless he gets to 100%? I don't think that's what they're... Maybe at least deevaluating was, was scary.
A lot of these are driven by state law that says this is, this is, uh, out of the Machinery Act.
Yes, no kind of Department of Revenue.
Department of what? Revenue. That, that set the parameters for what we can and can't do. Uh, one thing we didn't talk about was, uh, present use value. You know, we, with, uh, farms and, uh, other, uh, agricultural areas, rural areas where, uh, they're either actively farming or they have trees, foresting, uh, you know, they're taxed at 20% of assessed value. Uh, you know, that assessed value is reduced by 80%. Uh, so, there's a good bit of that land in Aridale County. Uh, so, uh, we want to come up with, you know, at, at the end of the day, we're not going to collect more taxes than it, than we need to run the county over this four-year period and meet the requirements of, uh, of our citizens. So, um, that, that budget process is open and, and all the numbers are out there and encourage you to, uh, you know, see the tax rates that are actually applied to the, your particular circumstance. And, and I will say that the market is driving a lot of this and, and it is, has been frothy in a lot of places. Uh, but, uh, what I've read is a laundry list of, uh, cities where they've law, you know, there's already been a 20% correction, uh, mostly in Texas and Florida and California and, uh, some other urban areas to include the Raleigh-Durham, the Triangle area. But the exceptions to the rule are Nashville and Charlotte and, uh, some others that, uh, are continuing to grow. So, in a recession, there's always winners and losers. There's some communities that thrive and some that don't. Uh, so, the general, you know, news that you get, uh, needs to be refined down to our area because we are, uh, the beneficiary of a lot of, uh, continued growth in Charlotte. Uh, but we have been trying to shape that growth appropriately so that the tax burden doesn't get out of kilter. You can look at some counties where they've had mostly residential growth and their tax rates are skyrocketing because they are having to, you know, build more schools. And so, that's why when we talk about economic development and education being joined at the hip and so important to what we do, it's because workforce is the long pole in the tent for employers. We have to invest in that to get good jobs and good employers that keep our residential tax rates low.
That's what, that was the importance. I mean, this is a public, uh, hearing so people can ask questions and this is the time to do it because I think once they get all the factual information and not the misleading information that sometimes is put out there, I think it, and, and as Jill mentioned, the board next year, along with the administration, can look at where the county's at, where all of the requirements and obligations the county have and consider lowering the property tax rate if they can do that. But that's where I think if people can sit back and relax and, um, the process is required every four years. It started in the 90s. You know, um, you and I talked at your last meeting, Wilkes County sat there for two years, not because they were paying attention to the economy, but they had a new assessor, young staff and didn't budget for an assessment. So, that misinformation was out there. So, I just want them to know, we're going to, whoever's here next year, whether I'm here or not, that board can look at the current situation and make adjustments if necessary at that time, but with a growing county and growing obligations with the schools here, you don't know what you're going to be able to do until you set down in, in that budget process and, and deal with it in real time. And, and I just wanted you, because I, I think the more people that know how the process is done, how it's calculated, it puts out some fears and misinformation. You know, that was where I was wanting you to address some of those things.
May I also say that our sales ratio...
Yes.
As of January of this year, it is 71.5%.
Right.
That's where I wanted you to go.
Yeah, mention that. I mean, I'm just saying, that's what I mean is, I know what you're saying, don't go in the weeds, but what I'm saying is, this is the time for citizens to hear from the experts that work for the county about the process and how it's done and what the county will do next year to do the right thing for the citizens.
And the state, if I'm not mistaken, they want us to be in high 90s and we're at 71. And if we, if we held it off a year, we could be in the 60s.
Yes.
So, and they won't let us do that.
And Wilkes County, although they postponed it, they were at 90% sales ratio, much better position than we're in.
Right. So, they could hold it off for two years and, and still be in, maybe in the higher 80s, but...
Yes.
If the government wants us to stay, what did you tell us, 90-something?
Well, for reappraisal, they want us to be near 100%.
Right.
So, we keep dropping after that, which is normal, but we are now four years out from 19. We are at 71.5%.
Well, and, and let me expand on that just a little bit. When we do reappraisal, they want us to be between 90 to 110. They want us to be at 100, but the threshold is between 90 and 110. They don't want us to be above 110. They don't want us to be below 90. So, at reappraisal, we want to be at 100, okay? Then we've got four years of changes to fluctuate and we want to stay between 90 and 110, okay? We are at 71%, which means that we have been notified of the Department of Revenue, you're outside that, that threshold, you need to look at doing a reappraisal because you're at 71%. They, Department of Revenue monitors that and they want us to be between 90 and 110, okay? So, that's why it's so important we're at 71% and that sales ratio is our, our tax value is at 71% of what the market is, okay? And that's what they, that's what they're looking at. So, we're at 71% of what the actual market values are and that, again, is monitored and governed by the Department of Revenue.
But there's big discrepancies within this county.
Yes.
There's some that are at 90% because they're right near Wilkes County, which is at 90%. Uh, so, uh, bottom line is, is we just want to be fair and equitable to everybody and we want you to know that we're not going to spend any more money than we have to spend to provide you the services that, uh, you expect. And, uh, I, you know, I guarantee you that budgeting going up, if, if, if the tax value went up 30% on a house, your tax that you pay is not going up 30%. It's just not because we're not going to be getting, inflating our budget by 22%. That's just not going to happen. So, anyway, uh, just stay tuned.
Thank you.
It's, it's a process and you're at the front end of the process.
Yes.
But be aware of your rights to appeal individually, you know?
Yes.
That's part of the process. Thank you, Fran. All right.
Chairman Mallory.
Is there Nita's motion?
Chairman.
Yes?
Close the public hearing.
I did, I thought.
No, you, did you? I thought you reopened it.
I thought he reopened it and then he closed.
Okay, all right, sorry.
I closed it. So, now I'll, uh, ask if there is a motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion to use the value schedules, uniform schedule of values for the 2023 countywide appraisal.
A motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? Uh, are you looking at, this was just, do we need to make a motion?
I don't think we have to. I don't think we have to.
Don't think we need an action. We don't need an action.
Go to the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Hearing and action is next meeting.
Okay.
That's okay.
All right. Okay, that takes us to item eight, which is our administrative matters. Uh, these are technically, typically technical issues that are brought by staff, uh, that we hear at the five o'clock hour, which is conducted at the same, uh, location and it's also, uh, broadcast. So, encourage people to come and listen to those if they, uh, would like to. And, uh, so at this time, I'll ask our county manager to tee up, uh, those items that are appropriate for our consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on October the 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in regard to a text amendment to the Land Development Code. There is a request from Solid Waste for approval to apply for the abandoned mobile home grant. That's a reimbursement grant through the Department of, um, or the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. A request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 16 to transfer unallocated funds in Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Fund to the Children's Hope Alliance and PMOP mediation. Those funds amount $27,623 to be, to be divided equally among the two. A request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 17 to allocate additional capital money to Aridale-Statesville Schools in the amount of $2,272,866 and Mooresville Gradeed Schools in the amount of $520,053 based on the actual sales taxes received in fiscal year 2122. And this is something that we do each year. This is kind of our true-up. We, we allocate those funds based on estimates and then we true it up based on actual receipts. A request for emergency medical services for approval to purchase power load cot fastening systems and this, this is the purchase of 21 power load cots to be funded with ARPA funds. Selection of engineer for Jennings Park Project Construction Materials Testing and Inspection Services, which is FNR engineering. A request from Finance Department for approval of the selection of an architectural firm for design services related to the Aridale County... for design services related to the Aridale County Center Entryway Project, and that is to Fuller Architectural. Selection of construction project manager at risk for Aridale County Government Center Entryway Project, which is Edifice General Contractors. The county construction projects update was presented for informational purposes only to the board. There was a request from the clerk to the board for approval of minutes from the meeting on September the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. There was a request from Animal Services to call for a public hearing on October the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven o'clock P.M. in regard to amendments to the animal control ordinance. And then finally, there was a request from Aridale Statesville Schools to move four million dollars from current expense to fund balance. Oh, excuse me, from current expense fund balance into the capital project with the ability to move up to seven million if needed in order to help with the completion of several capital projects. After much discussion, it was agreed to table this item until after the school facility task force meeting on October the thirteenth, to be followed by an education task force meeting with the commissioners in Aridale Statesville Schools, which will follow soon after.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. Any further discussion on those items? Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Motion to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Howe. We have no announcements of any vacancies on any boards or commissions this evening, nor do we have any appointments to those boards or commissions. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. This is not a public comment period meeting. Is there any new business to come before the commission? Finally, item fourteen, county managers' report.
Just a quick update to the board to let you know some important dates. Friday, October the fourteenth is voter registration deadline for the November eighth election. So if you are not registered to vote and wish to do so in the November eighth election, you need to register by October the fourteenth. One-stop early voting begins on Thursday, October the twentieth at eight o'clock A.M. We have five different locations that will be available. Those are the Board of Elections on Stockton Street, the War Memorial in Mooresville, Lake Norman Fire Department, which is on Brawley School Road, Troutman Library, and then Harmony North Aridale American Legion Post. So those are your five one-stop early voting sites.
Thank you, Ms. Moll. We had a closed session prior, between our pre-agenda and our agenda meeting, full seven o'clock agenda meeting to discuss an item for personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one subsection A six. We've taken action that is, is a, not shared with the general public on that. We also have an item of, under attorney-client pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one-one subsection A three, which we will recess into closed session at our conference room and return when we have completed that item.